Councilmember Ripken, Senator Congressman Anfield.
Hello.
Councilmember Tice.
Here.
Councilmember Connect.
Here.
Councilmember Gervais.
Here.
Councilmember Pitt.
Here.
I'm Councilmember Peter Baker.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
I'm here too. We're all here.
(laughter)
We have a fire heading to now and we have one at the end of the meeting for public comments. So if anyone would like to address the council, you may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Mr. Gabriel?
Good evening. I'd just like to address the council, give you a little update of what's going on, type of thing with the economic recruitment downtown. I continue to work on different groups of opening restaurants in the Kerr Building, craft out loud, which is a new craft store, kind of like a Jo-Ann's Faberous type thing. They're gonna have some classes and that sort of thing. They should open April 1st and that'll be in the Kerr Building. Butter Nut Ridge, I will tell you, is having great success. They're very happy in the end of that building. There's another gentleman that was here this weekend, had a chance to take a, kind of walk through and look at Winterfest and he was selling products out of that same building. And so he's coming back in two weeks and we're gonna talk about it building. What's interesting is that we are having people that have moved away here, from here, that are now taking a look at having their kids or setting their kids up in business or coming back to reside here for the retirement. And so we've got two or three groups like that and it's kind of an interesting combination of why they're coming back and so, but they do see the vibrancy of, at least of what's going on right now. Short's Run Porch, told you that was gonna open last year? Well, it's opening this year. Should open mid-spring and that was all due to construction and changes that they had to make to the building and also getting workers there to do the construction. As you know, it's been a very busy construction season. The Brupah situation at 7173, we have an RFQ out right now, as you know. February 6th is the closing date on that. We have two very interested parties. I'm going to meet with one here in a week and we hope to be able to bring, when that RFQ closes, we hope to be able to bring one or two proposals to you for review to see if you'd like to go forward with it. The Taylor's RFQ is coming out in February, so we'll have that and I think you guys, or at least you, a group just toured that building. Lefties is in destruction mode as we speak. They had to stop and get a few things with asbestos, but basically they're working on the apartments first and then they'll do the restaurants coming up when the apartments are finished. The Corona Smoke Shop, and that's really probably one of the main reasons why I'm here tonight. So a couple of things. So they hit their deadline. They had a hard deadline of December 31st where they had to sell something in order to retain a license that they had in Esper. And so the cooperation from the city employees was tremendous. And as I go through, I just don't want to miss anybody's name. So we had Kenny Fickell, who met me down there, prior to those people coming in, we talked about the project, what needed to be done, and talked about the timeframe and I will tell you, he was instrumental in getting this to happen. When he could not be there on December 30th at 3 o'clock so that we could get the paperwork in order to have them make their sale the next day for the state, he had Tim Bussard come down and I met with him at 3:15. We walked through the construction along with Jason Phibas, the owner, and then they gave him the temporary occupancy so that they could get it done. Fire Marshal Steve Trall was down there a number of times, very cooperative. I think when you bring people into a project like this, they give you a lot of help and I can't tell you how much help they were. And then I'm gonna talk about Rick Hamilton with the electric. He also came down on that day and we went through the building. The owners couldn't be there, so actually it was the 31st and I was there for him to meet and we went through all the electrical codes, had the owner on the phone and we were able to get that accomplished. On the inside, we had Sam Allright, she had, and probably Sean, they had all the paperwork ready from Kenny Fickell to get the occupancy done. So again, it's, it's really a group of people to make things happen and I think that's what it takes for downtown, including downtown businesses participating. Dave Neitzer, I will tell you, the project doesn't get done without Dave Neitzer getting the plumbing done because they had to have two bathrooms. And they were there on Saturdays and Sundays and late nights, I was there with them looking, seeing what they were doing. They said, hey, wanna see the progress? But again, it is somebody else who has a business downtown that wants to see the downtown thrive that, you know, made their effort and put their time in, put extra time in to get it done. And I would also give a plug in for Lisa and Audrey. I think our group together, along with Gray Rocky and Keith, I think we accomplished a lot in our meetings and although we can't tell you every business and every person that we talked to, I will tell you that there's a lot happening, there's a lot of vibrancy and you'll see some businesses open up here within this year and next year.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate the update.
Random quick question, Tim.
Yep?
On the smoke shop, they're taking two of the buildings, so is one for sale?
No. So what's gonna happen is, and I apologize, I shouldn't have given you that. So in a week and a half, they hope to open the tobacco part of the store. So that'll be the second building. The first building, we are in the process of applying for the liquor license. They've got a couple of other questions that have to get answered. Again, city held to say, hey, we need these answers, so we hope to bring that to you here at the next meeting and have that done. The third building is now blocked off, okay? They are gonna rent that bottom level. The people that own Lefties, I'm not sure what their intention is at this point in time because they have such a project and per building code, they had to block it all off, so. But it is, if you know somebody that's interested, I do have two people that are looking at it right now and I think they would accommodate rent-wise to make it happen, so. But anyway, so two of the three will be used, but they also will retain the top stories of all three buildings. If they ever did anything, the third building would be a kind of situation similar to the Kerr Building. Great to know how that goes.
Thanks. Would anyone else like to address the council at this time on the public comments?
Julie. This is your turn.
Oh, sorry. I didn't realize that. Sean was gonna break it up. Winterfest, so I'm here to talk about Winterfest and we really feel like it was a successful thing last Saturday. Hopefully some of you maybe got down here. But we had a snowman contest and you could see that we chose Michigan Cash Utilities as the first place and the second place was ProMedica. And they actually win cash prizes, so the $200 goes to Michigan Cash Utilities and they're gonna donate it to EV clients, or EV center, sorry. So that's all a good thing. You can see the other ones were very creative. We had 13 people make these out of anything that they wanted to make them out of and then they placed them downtown for people to view them as they were going in and out of the stores tasting the chilis. So it was kind of a neat addition. Go to the next slide and you'll see, nope, well, that's another group of them and then the next one, you'll see actually RCPPU got really involved in the city telecommunications from the water department and DMS, they're owning together. They're quite competitive. For the Soup and the Chili Cook-Off, we had 189 people, five cars for the tastings and there were 10 tasting spots. So for $5, they got to cruise downtown and taste all of the different ones. You can see the winners of each one are up there and I guess it's a pretty big deal. I mean JT's takes it pretty seriously if they don't win, so. And then it's kind of the ice, we chose to do wood this year so that it would last a little longer, so we brought in three wood carvers and they, I think we have five total. And if you entered into the Soup and the Chili Cook-Off, your name went into a drawing to win one of these. So they actually come, they kicked it up. We had sled dogs and that was, a lady from Countess Zoo came down and did a little presentation on her dogs and how she got involved in it and the races that she does with the dogs and the kids loved petting them and took pictures with them. And then we had Clark the Juggler. He did everything from balancing eight chairs and holding them in his mouth to throwing fire, so that was awfully interesting to watch too. So we had a great turnout. I think, I think if I had to guess, it'd probably be close to 400 people going around downtown and that led right into the Tippage Show, which I heard was amazing as well, so it was a great turnout. Any questions?
Just wanted Julie to give an update with the being so fresh, so.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you very much. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wants it removed for further clarification. Tonight, our consent agenda will be back, our minutes of January 13th, our closed session minutes of January 13th, the public library advisory minutes of December 9th, public housing minutes of December 10th, our planning commission minutes of December 2nd, and the DDA minutes of November 20th. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Does anyone, the public wanting to remove for clarification? Anyone up here? Seeing none, we would like for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Some move, support.
We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number six, bills and accounts, they're asking us to approve $68,588 tonight. Tom is here, Joffrey's here. Any questions on the bills?
Yeah, I have a question. We have $500 worth of incentive on 69 West Chicago Street.
That's the Kerr Building and that's for one of the tenants that's going in there that Tim has been working on.
Which one's that?
That's the Butter Nut Ridge.
Beef.
That's why it's a one-third of what the normal, what our contractual incentive is with him, it represents one-third of what the other is being, because that's a, it's a building temporarily.
Any other questions on the bills? If not, they'd like promotions when we get them paid.
Some move, support.
Your motion and support to pay our bills, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number seven, city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, your honor. Good evening, everyone. It's that time of year again, so we've scheduled board of review and the dates on that are March 9th, 10th, and 11th and they're various times, but those are also in the city calendar. So for those that are interested in having their values reconsidered for their properties, that they can make a scheduled appointment with Deb Sikorski through Neighborhood Services Department, our city assessor, and she will take care of that for you and get you scheduled for the board of review. Couple announcements relative to the police department. We have another new police officer. We'd like to welcome Antistar Azakari, went to the co-honor city police department. Officer Azakari is a resident of Coldwater. She comes to us from Branch County Sheriff's Department, where she's been working for a couple of years as a patrol deputy. She attended KCC and their police academy and received an associate's degree in criminal justice, so we appreciate that she's joining us and we'd like to welcome her to the co-honor police department. And with some of the moving chairs over there, we've had a opening in our sergeants and we are promoting Officer Corinne Boardner, has been promoted to sergeant from patrol officer. Officer Boardner's been with the CPD for over 20 years and has proven herself and was the first, she was the first special duty officer, which included both code enforcement and court responsibilities and so that's been in place now for a couple of years. She was the first one to do that. And I've come to find out, she was also the first, now she's the first woman to be sergeant for the CPD, so we'd like to congratulate her on the promotion. Hopefully you saw the announcement last week about the grant announcement from the Michigan Department of Transportation. The city received $375, $375,000 for the reconstruction of Sauk River Drive, which would be between South Michigan Avenue and South Willowbrook. And that was received in conjunction with the activity that's going on at Penske Logistics Truck Terminal. So that activity, that commercial activity, that commercial traffic is creating quite a bit of congestion down there and it's also deteriorating the road. And so with that being, with that and the other truck terminal down there, another commercial traffic, it's a busy intersection with South Michigan and Sauk River Drive. And so this will provide an opportunity for us to reconstruct that road, add wider shoulders, add a turn lane so that trucks can then turn onto South Michigan and can also stack out of the way from normal traffic. So we hope that that would relieve congestion that's currently taking place down there. And it's about a 75-25 split between the city and Dodge.
Keith, you said that was South Michigan to Willowbrook, or about South Michigan to Spring? That just will be as it is? That doesn't get to go over there?
Well, it doesn't get quite the commercial traffic, but as far as, as far as an affordable scale project for us to apply for, the more immediate need was from Willowbrook to Michigan and then we can look forward. Not familiar with the condition right now, but we can look forward then in our budget as far as going from Michigan to Willowbrook to Spring.
How that would get in with other road needs, I see.
Then lastly, a couple, a couple events coming up with the Coldwater Recreation Department, the Daddy Daughter Dance, Saturday, February 8th. When I checked on Friday, we're probably under 100 left, so if you're interested in that, get registered as soon as possible, just a couple of weeks away. And then following that, a month later, is the Mother-Son Dance, Mother-Son Night. And they're again, a well-participated activity and so for either one of those, if you'd like to participate, contact the Coldwater Recreation Department with that, so that's all I have.
Questions for Keith? If not, a motion to approve the city manager report, please.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Number eight, we have a presentation from the Coldwater High School Interact Club regarding our mural project for 73 West Chicago.
So as they make their way up there, they initially approached the city as to the opportunity to do something like this that was similar to what they've seen in other communities and we had identified as to what might be an available building subject to your approval. One, they need your, they need your approval to, one, look at the design of the mural as well as approving where it might be located, so. As long as there's an instructor and...
Good, glad you speak, Keith.
Okay. So we're all officers of the CHS Interact Club. I'm Kelly Warner, the sergeant of ours.
I'm Alabada, Abby Sullivan.
I'm Al, I'm Turner.
And I'm Kate, I'm from, I'm gonna press to open. And then Kate, Post-Elmer, President, but he's not present today.
So we figured we could give a quick introduction of ourselves in case you guys haven't heard of us before. One of the main projects we do is the ABC Challenge. Last year was pretty successful for us. We earned, we raised about $3,025 and through that we were able to give about $250 to a majority of the schools within Branch County. And not only that, but we also received help from the Jonesville Interact Club and a little bit from the Union City, a little bit from the Union City as well, so we thought it would be only a grant and we also put some of the proceeds to return in favor and we donated $500 to each of them. A couple of school teachers, we figured that based on each, we could then give them some money as well if they needed anything for their class. We'd love to see you guys come out and support, maybe even run our, what, run activity. It'll be June 13th, 2020, for any of you who are interested.
So as Carol said, ABC Challenge is kind of like our main event, but we also do a lot of other events as well. Our main motto for interactive service of self, so some of the activities that kind of represent this motto are we do peer mentoring at the elementary schools. We did a food drive in November and we donated 2,450 pounds of food for the holiday baskets. We have the mural project, which we'll be talking about a little later. And then we have, we did the Make a Difference Day activity where we kind of helped clean up at St. Charles and we also went to make the lawn and had some activities with the older folks. And then we also do other various activities throughout the year. We offer a lot for our members.
Okay, so at the Monts Larsen, it's kind of empty there since the new building a couple of years ago. And so we decided that the principal, the principal's at Swarms, she said that we should have like murals around the school. So I was, this is not even recommended to me because I'm a law student, so I have a lot of Jonathan kids. And I thought it was a big, great idea, well, to just like motivate the kids to just go in there and just look at the murals. And I've sketched three murals and then with the help of the volunteers from the Interact member group, and we're moving close to the other side of the school and those are three murals. Also, we have a mural that we will be making for the Coldwater, like Bronson, Marshall, and the other cities around us. And, and then we need about $8,000 to $10,000 for this mural project and we've had $2,500 from Walmart Distribution Center and we have, we've had also $200 from Cummins and we were , we applied for a community foundation grant and we're also looking for other names for the mural project. And that was one of the, Abby Litt was one of the first one, one contest for the mural. And that's her with Kate Post-Elmer, not a president. Oh, and also this is one of the lucky, that we've done.
So basically, we need you to approve our idea of having the downtown mural project. We took submissions from students and residents and we were able to decide, we voted on our favorites and the kids in the club, we have almost 100 members of our club, we chose the mural that you see now, We Are Coldwater. And it was drawn by Abby Litt, a former graduate of CHS and an Interact member. And so this is our proposed design. We're going to hire a muralist, a painter, to paint it with all of the proceeds, the funds that we're allocating. We also have a proposed site, which is 73 West Chicago Street. And then we were also, would like to have a sign, sort of like a thermometer sign, where we can show how much money we've raised so far and how much money we still need to raise so that we can earn this money by the spring and summer when we'll be able to start painting the mural. So those are sort of the three main things, the, the location, the thermometer sign, and then of course the design. We're looking for your support.
Is there a backup plan for the site? Is there another, you know, is there another building other than 73 with the mural?
Had you approached anyone else or identified anywhere else that might be available or might have a big enough, light enough wall to?
I agree, it's a nice big, light wall and I love trees. I say that, but there's a big tree right there. And the Cummins are donating money, but I saw on the logo, is there a case? That's all I got.
What happens if Tim is successful in bringing, say, a business to that building? Would the mural, that be painted over?
It would, to some extent, depends on what that deal would require. Some would look at, if someone need that, we marketed that building too for the possibility of an outdoor cafe or patio, so you might have openings in that. I don't think that precludes the use of the wall or any, you scale it further, further up, or so. Had you talked with, had you looked at what the scale of the painting would be as far as, are you thinking the entire wall or are you thinking a portion of the wall?
We could really do either. The muralist could make it a portion of the wall, kind of like Quincy, if you've seen Quincy's, there's not the entire wall, it's just a portion. In Marshall, it is an entire wall of a building, downtown Marshall, so it could go either way.
Well, I just, my obvious here, we think it's wonderful. I think everybody here thinks it's wonderful and a lot of support. My other question would be for Tim or Lisa, that if you do have a business that goes there and has a purchase option, as beautiful as it is, would they not want their own name of their business there?
I'd do that.
I mean, I hate to see you spend $8,000 to $10,000 a year, you know, the Hazel Baker Brupah goes in there and is that, is that a concern, Tim or Lisa, or?
They can't paint it on the building there, so.
Do we have an ordinance that says that they?
I hate to say, I can't believe I said that, but come on.
We haven't really discussed that, other than I thought we had some conversation about our ordinance and whether or not businesses can advertise their painting on the side of a building. So I'm not sure, but I think our ordinance has some sort of restrictions for that, specific businesses, but we could look at that definitely. Again, you know, we're trying to recruit as fast as we can or hopefully to have something, you know, to be by February 6th, but we don't know if that will happen. So as we work through our processes, you know, we certainly have conversations with people about that and then also maybe trying to provide other locations. But I think it is an ordinance question and then also how it could be done, maybe to convince it.
Well, we have a formal plan here, so we'll have to...
So from the ordinance standpoint, the ordinance makes a provision for murals, murals aren't considered signs, so. The mural itself would be permitted and then as to signage for any future business, there is, a sign by definition will have certain size requirements.
That's what I was talking about, was for a business, like you'll sometimes you'll see, you know, a side of a building might say Coffee all the way down, spelled out on the side of the business. My understanding was that our ordinance didn't allow that, but that doesn't mean they wouldn't be able to have a perpendicular sign to 12 that said Coffee. So that's a bigger issue than our recruitment team can handle, it's more of a council issue. But I think mural is obviously a great idea.
So the Interact Club and everybody, just so you know, this is kind of a movie target with this building, then it could be an issue, could it? I don't know how we can rather option that building to a business than tell them they have to have a beautiful mural on the side if they chose to do some advertising. You perceive that being a problem?
Well, you get, you get to set the rules as far as that, if you have a condition and, you know, that's entirely up to you as to whether or not you, so restrictions, I'm, I did.
I think there's some really cool, creative ways that we could work with the Interact Club and the potential investment, to have both, to be able to maybe do if the council all of a sudden decided you could have signage on the side of a building, painted on the building, which I don't think we currently have, but if they did, where you might be able to have it close to side to Chicago Street and then maybe have a mural on the other side. There's also additional signage that that building is capable of having, not only out front, but then also something that comes out vertically to the street, similar to what Hoskey, what has recently done.
Exactly, so we could have a proposal to action buy the building immediately and own it instead of renting home and then we're having a mural.
You would have to have that talked about and figured out at a time of purchase. Now, if that were to happen next week, then maybe we'd have to have to find another option.
Yeah, can I help?
Just two other possibilities maybe come into mind. One of them could be like the side of the Taylor's building we were just in and another option would be, it wouldn't be our wall, but in the building we're to remove on Moore Street, that open alleyway, that might be nice. It's not, it's not under the main drag, but I think your concerns are valid, so.
Actually, I mean, there are some concerns, I think. As supportive as we are, just so you understand that, I think we're very supportive, we just don't want you to do a huge fundraiser and find out, we don't own the building in a year and again, it's, they don't want that mural on their business. Again, it's, uh, they don't want that mural on their business. I don't know if that's a legitimate concern or not, but it's.
Tim, I would just say that, that, that is something as we talk to people, uh, that is something that we could also talk to the people that we are, uh, listening with and say, hey, there's potential for you to do this, but there could be a mural on the building. You don't know, some people might say, hey, I really like that idea. But we won't know until we get a little further in the process with the people there.
Well, the signage ordinance and rules are changing with the Supreme Court rules, so there may be more, there may be more opening for a business to do more advertising.
Right.
So it's kind of a moving target right now.
Well, there is an architectural, uh, design that we have to that, that.
We have a planner coming up.
He has a garage door. And so if you have a garage door, that's the end of the mural. I like being able from there.
With signage, we consider to be the messaging portion of, of a sign and kind of measure that. And so if someone wanted to get it created, put a mural up, I've had this question for a building, especially to put a mural up. And my response is usually like, I want to see what the mural is and if it's reasonable, I guess, there, there's nothing wrong with adding a painted sign on your building, there's nothing wrong with adding a mural on your building. Um, we just wanted to look at the design and make sure that it's a mural with a portion of the sign, or it's not just the whole wall painted to be assigned, then someone's saying, well, it's technically a mural because it's painted. Um, I don't like saying, no, people, I don't like making them paint over their signs or remove them. So I'm pretty happy to work with people, um, as far as, you know, what they're trying to accomplish.
But again, if somebody, for example, we get a successful micro business in there and they want to paint a scenic portrait of people, a beer garden or something that's very attractive, potentially that could be allowed?
I don't see, I mean, if it's a, we don't have a mural ordinance.
Right.
So, you know, depending on how much this explicit advertising and how much this is seeing, then I'm pretty open to being flexible on that.
Into the Interact, that's a concern. We grant you permission of moment, we have control, but we may not have control of it in a very short time, hopefully. So, I don't, you guys, up to you there, I ask, up to us.
The question I guess I would pose is, there are actually a couple of questions here in this. And one is that, can we go ahead and authorize them to continue raising money? If we are supportive of them doing a sign, it might not necessarily be at seventy-three West Chicago. You know, maybe they'll find another, um, maybe there's another business owner downtown, or another place that would be interested in having a sign. So to sit there and nix them now, because if they're raising money by, by April and May, maybe things will fall into place a lot more. And at that point in time, we could say, okay, come back to, here's the building where the, the mural's going to be, but at least we've got a mural project that's going instead of just tabling it, waiting until May. And then all of a sudden, they gotta go back and raise money. If their goal is to try and raise the money to be able to provide for this, I would say it would be not paternity.
Because I think Co-Order Interact, well, Co-Order Schools in general are fabulous, particularly the Interact Club. I have volunteered to work with them to look at different locations as far as having different options moving forward. That if this one doesn't work, maybe, you know, we've already got permission from someone else and, and help them look at several locations downtown in case the best case scenario happens. Or maybe the best case scenario is to sell it and still have the mural, but I'm happy to do that because they're pretty cool.
So we don't need to be directly involved. If, if I were to come to a different property, if it were just this mural or anything similar, it's, we wouldn't regulate that. There wouldn't be any prohibition from that, so. They're, they're seeking approval from you because we own the building.
So we could give them approval at parole par. Uh, I mean, that's all we can do, because the building sells in three months, while they're still raising their money, there's nothing we can do about it. In the meantime, if they want to use that as, as their premise to raise money and still serve for other areas of case, in the meantime, we, they might sell it to somebody who wants it.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. So it could, it sounds like we'd be inclined to grant permission, but that could change in a year or six months or three months. And so if you know, if that's okay with you, it sounds like Jim and John's suggestion is good. The rest of us are okay with that.
You, you may paint it the day after it's done, it gets sold, the new owners change it.
Maybe a short-term mural, of course, and it's on our permission.
As long as they know that, you know, working with Lisa, playing.
That makes sense.
We're supportive of the project.
I think that's the issue.
I have a question on the project itself. We've got about three thousand of the eight to ten. What's your timeline? When do you hope to have the eight to ten to do this?
By the spring and summer.
By the spring, okay. You have some other fundraisers in mind?
Would you, we'd be inclined to make a motion to approve a mural on this building as long as we have control, as long as we have, as long as it's vacant, something like that.
I would, yeah, they're discretion.
I don't really want to impose a rule on the new renter that they have to keep the mural if they don't want to. I don't think that would be, uh.
Is there any way to make the mural, like, out of wood?
That wall?
Somehow.
It becomes a sign.
So maybe take it on an actual building, maybe they're not.
You see, I can, I mean, we, we want to be helpful, but we're trapped in a successful business there right now as a priority. If we don't want you to waste your money, um, you want to rethink this, we'll come back, or do you want us to? It sounds like we might be inclined to grant permission to use this building, but it could be a very short, um, short-term mural, potentially. Does that make sense? Okay.
I will make a motion for it.
What do you want?
I think, you know, in the short term, that would be fine. And then if, if the location sells and we're not able to use that space, we'll continue to look for another space that would accommodate the mural.
And even if it doesn't sell, if we run it to someone or do a lease purchase, I don't believe we would impose and mandate them to keep that mural on if that conducive to their business plan. I think, you know, is that, you want to make that motion then, as long as we are, I don't know how we want to word that, but you were John.
Making motion to allow Co-Order High School Interact Club to proceed with their mural project at seventy-three West Chicago Street. With the understanding that if we lose control of the building or signed agreement dictates otherwise, the mural could be removed. And then it's up to, that's my motion. Then it's up to you guys, see where you're at when you get your money, if you come up with something different.
At least it can help you look for alternative options that would be longer term possibly, is that? I think we understand what we're doing, I just want to make sure you're okay with, understand it, so. Our support, we're okay with that? Any final, um, question, clarification? Nah. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, good luck to you, yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm okay, if you want to make, if you want to formalize it by allowing, whether it's, yeah, if you want to allow.
We allow fundraising signs, is it for market, market, or what?
No, ask the state.
I don't think that, I think that our policy is we won't have signs in front of the mural, or something.
Right.
I thought so.
Can you go in the park for the, down for the mural?
A lot thanks to the building.
Well, it's, yeah, it's our property, the green space between the, the center and the building is ours as well.
But not real clear, we, we can't allow a fundraising, so then how do we say no to a, um, Joe Biden fundraising, uh, sign or a Donald Trump? If that's slippery slope, we're going down, then Cubs fans want to have a fundraising, there we go.
I think we've been here before.
We've been here before.
We've done this before, and I think we should presume with great caution. So that should, that should be the product of some research and further discussion.
We've encountered this before and kind of cautious. So what would your recommendation, be we not, uh, could we like it?
I think that when you open up a fundraising, when you say that the space is available for fundraising signs, you begin to have a limited purpose public forum. And once you do that, how do you, you can choose, you cannot, you can choose above the essence.
Any group, if you have a group, maybe we can add support of them.
Well, whether you support them or not, or whether there are twelve of them, you know, there's a certain point.
Just put it on a Co-Order Schools property somewhere where it's got high visibility.
Or, or if you'd be so, or offer them a great opportunity to be there.
Probably a safer path for us.
For us, for the city, yes.
We won't take action on the, uh, fundraising sign, you'll have to put it in Bill Melon's front yard or something.
We'd like to annex a small section of your property, just for a short time.
You already did, we have a first place for the school.
Regardless, good luck to you guys, it's a nice project. Thank you very much for bringing it to us. Um, number nine is a letter from Keith Baker regarding the wholesale of twenty-five Bronson Street. Uh, do you want to summarize that for us?
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is a property that we purchased with a number of other properties through the property, state property tax foreclosure process, with the intent of demolishing it, given its condition. It has foundation and structural issues. Uh, but we did have an opportunity for our fire department to train on that for a, a couple sessions. Uh, but in as much as we were going to demolish it, um, Mr. and Mrs. Short came forward and asked if they could put an offer on the property, and they have submitted an offer. And with any offer, it has to be presented to you and sits on the table for thirty days. So our prior plan would have been to demolish the property, or demolish the building on the property, and as part of our polite abatement process. And, um, and we would have incurred the additional cost of asbestos removal and demolition had we continued down that road. Now you have a decision as to whether or not you want to sell it prior to making those other, uh, prior to completing that work, or, um, or selling it.
Questions for Keith?
So what are they going to do with the lot? Is there plans for it at this point?
Their plan is to have their employees parked across the street, because they have limited parking themselves at the root beer stand.
Is that in writing? Could they change their mind and do something else if they chose to?
As long as it was within code and ordinances, they could eventually do something.
Is that, is that what they want? And what, what were we going to do with the house? Were we just going to tear it down and do it?
Sell it to the neighbors, sell it to the neighbors, sure.
It was, it was one that we had been mowing for a couple of years, and that we had done a jump cleanup on, and we had, it had accumulated quite a bit of, um, leans against it because of the cost we'd incurred.
It wasn't a house we were going to burn, but you tried to sell that?
No, definitely not.
If you remember, uh, as we talked, everyone was leaning, Kenny had given us reports, it was not, not legal, it was habitable. We were going to demo, so we were saving, you know, over eleven thousand dollars and not having to demo it. It seemed like a, a win-win, but any other questions, or Keith?
This is going to be, what, thirty days, so anybody else that's interested, bid aye.
Yep.
And somebody advertising that as as far as.
We typically don't, I mean, above and beyond what me, it covers, probably.
What we would look for is an introduction, an ordinance, uh, agreement number twenty-eight oh-two, if you're so inclined.
I hope we, I'll have that agreement of twenty-eight oh-two.
Support.
I'm just thinking about lefties and what we went through with lefties about other businesses.
Do we have a support on that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, next question, your answer.
I'm just thinking over what we just got done discussing, a month and a half ago on lefties and people wanting an opportunity, and we had to go back and re-advertise it because it's being used for business purposes.
Right, it's.
Have we done the same?
Traditionally, we've sold these lots to neighbors for a thousand or two thousand dollars when we're done, so maybe they want to offer more, more than helpful.
I'm just thinking with the advertising portion of it, because I don't think there's any competing business next door to them.
Right. Any other common questions? This will require a roll call vote, and it will come back to us in thirty days. So if we have a motion, we have support, would, uh, please take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Chris Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Canine?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fetzko?
Yes.
Councilmember Isleyfer?
Yes.
Councilmember Galt?
Yes.
May Cray?
Thank you, yes. Uh, motion carried. We have a last one, our agenda for public comments, if anyone would like to address the council now, then we do so. Seeing that we have unfinished business at our level, we do have a, one item, we have new business under our level, Ivan. Uh, Councilman Canine?
I'm here to do it. I just want you to go over or question something, I guess. Um, on our contract for the downtown business sales. My understanding, we passed a reading through the contract, is that it's when Mr. Hadrell, uh, he's getting a monthly stipend for his, uh, subsection A, which is the monthly meetings and everything that he's got to attend. And then on the, uh, section B, the incentive is specific in the contract, bakery, bar cake shop, brewery, brew club, delicatessen, tasting room, wine shop, not a liquor store, full-service restaurant, entertainment venue, clothing or shoe retailer, stationery seller, book seller. And the, uh, Butternut Ridge Farms is, uh, inside of a butcher shop, just like a wholesale meat, meat sales, I guess, is what it would be. Is kind of a question on the contract, like, so now, when we have these other businesses, when we approve this, we were looking at specific businesses to be brought into downtown. And now we see what we have, uh, craft store opening up and some other ones. Uh, just questioning, making sure we're staying on focus with the contract that we originally came up with. And then how many incentives are coming? Are, are we incented, I thought we're incentivizing, like, he, or his entity, um, went on, got, had a, saw, not people that are coming in asking to open, correct?
Well, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, the discussions we've had internally is that, um, yes, there were specific businesses in which we've, we targeted and we directed, or tend to, to go after. But it's, but there are also other businesses that are, that are coming, two of us are coming through him, that he does a lot of line work on, or trying to facilitate to, whether he's working with a building owner, or whether he's working with someone looking for a building. Given that particular business and given the, the language of the, of the contract, we thought a, um, a percentage of that per diem or the incentive would be appropriate for, for his work on that. I don't have it in front of me, but.
For him going and bringing them in, or for the work he did with them?
So the, well, the incentive is for any time that a business that he's working with, Lisa or Tim can come forward. The, um, you know, when a business opens that he's been working on, that's when incentive kicks in. And then the follow-up incentive is that that business exists one year later, there's a follow-up incentive.
I, I, so I'm just going back to, I guess that's what you're seeing in interpretations of the contract. Because when I'm, when I'm reading the contract, it's, uh, the incentive comes in which, when an agreement, which is open through the contractor's efforts, which, when we discussed it, almost a year and a half ago, it was, whoever the contractor is, goes and brings somebody in. And, uh, I think the, one of the questions I had at the time was, I said, if the marijuana lot got accepted and ate, just people came in and opened up dispensaries, are we paying for that? The answer was, no, they come in on their own. Um, so I'm, I mean, I'm concerned that with, the reason we're paying this contracting burden out fee is somebody to go up and bring a business in. If we had action downtown, that wasn't what we originally talked about on the incentive. That, that's what the, uh, twelve fifty a month was for, was for that work helping them come through.
I don't, I don't have the advantage of having it in front of me, but, um, but yeah, it's, it's at your direction, definitely. And there is a thirty-day outlay within the contract too. If there was a question as to the concern, they move you forward, so.
The question to it is, how would we incentivize? Because I know how that business ended up down there. I met with him three times. I met with him three times and directed him to you and told you they were coming to you. They asked me to, I'm like, tour him, I said, no, we have, we have staff in place for that. So that's what I'm looking at is, as businesses come in and open, we want somebody that's going after them. We shouldn't be, according to this contract, the reason we made this agreement, I don't, I personally don't believe that the idea was to just pay fifteen hundred dollars every time a business opens and fifteen hundred when it's open for a year. It was for the services of going out and bringing it goes in. I think that was pretty clear, that that was our understanding. Open aye? Any more, anybody else?
I know that this is a unique situation because like you said, there were people that knew that Butternut wanted to come into the area. One of the things, I went in and met with them, bought a little Friday night beef to take home. You know, one of the things that they really indicated to me was the working with Tim, the relationship building and the helping throughout, getting him, getting them in, and then also building that relationship to where, you know, maybe someday they would like to have more of a permanent, you know, six, seven day a week operation, maybe look at expansion, those types of things that aren't happening right now, what they could possibly happen in the future. And I know that when you're looking at the list of, of what types of businesses to bring in, that does get tricky because, you know, we're looking at a craft place, right? But it wasn't on our list, but it's a great addition to downtown, right? So to your point, do we want to incentivize just any business that comes in or do we want to incentivize businesses that we think it would be a good match, which obviously Butternut Ridge is and a craft store is also. So I can only answer from our standpoint that having Tim doing the legwork, working with the people, bringing them in, having additional conversations with them has been very beneficial to our overall recruitment efforts.
I do have a question. Because like Butternut Ridge, they're only open like Friday and Saturday for four, five hours, something like that. Is there a requirement for how long a business has to be open in order for them to qualify?
I wasn't around quite, I don't know what that says. I'm just curious, is it like a Monday through Friday, like a whole, you know, what the grant there's worth? Are there's any?
No, we didn't.
It just says open, it just says open is the word. And then after, however, after the initial twelve months, the incentive to the contractor for the initial opening of new business shall be renegotiated. So it just says open, it doesn't say forty hours a week or anything like that. But the, the contract is, is clear. Actually, that's what first caught my eye was the incentive was five hundred dollars. And I thought, I said, oh, the incentive was fifteen hundred. Then I looked into which one it was and I'm like, well, I went down and met them at the farmer's market and I went and met with them two other times, had fun conversations with them, you know, turned them over, had a great product, great family, drive that business through. I'm, I'm just concerned, just concerned with the contract and that we're following it, because what we agreed to, the taxpayers are looking at the expenditures of it. You know, we're following, if we need to change it, you want to put any business that opens, then I mean, we can change the contract at a time. I would suggest we change the contract, but I would also suggest that we follow one hand in front of us.
I understand we wrote that expecting and hoping somebody's up, beating the bushes, but if somebody walks in cold and the deal's completed by that person, I don't have a problem with it. It's just as important to complete the deal, whether or not he made the initial contact or not.
I have a question to Jim, and I had nothing to do with the renewal though, so I'm not involved, but the confusion is more with the bonus, right, Jim? And so what if, I was asking everybody if in the future, if Keith would look at that and maybe you eliminate the bonus and incentivize, you know, where he paid Tim per month, there's no difference between Audrey or Lisa or whatever. So you say it would be cleaner, maybe if that changed and the bonus incentive was eliminated to make it balance out?
I mean, I think incentive is great if it's used for its reasons. There's, on the back of the contract, there's two incentives, B and B. And B was the incentive. A is all the things the contractor will do during the month and that, that's what's covered. So that twelve fifty a month is meaning with them taking care of this. This is all, on the initial contract we agreed, that was the twelve fifty a month is where all this work that, you know, covering the ones that weren't burned up in, but all the work he's doing, because I know it's a ton of work that he has to go through, sustain on and all that, about weekends and everything else. I, I think the incentive is good, I just want to make sure that it's...
Understanding.
Well, it's, the salesman sells their car against...
Apply to certain, certain uses or, or offices.
I just, like I say, question this one was, it wasn't the amount that was in the contract and it's either, well, I can understand, I guess, the bike.
Pro rating it. Yeah, that's what, the idea was pro rating it.
But that's, but that's also not in the contract. And that, I mean, that could be a question. If we have a building, we put eight micro businesses in it that are open on weekends, a pottery shop or something like that, are we going to be paying three thousand dollars? That first year, every time we open eight businesses and the new tailor building and we pay twenty-four thousand dollars or... And I mean, that's what I do, that's fine, but we should...
What would you, or we, what would you like Keith to maybe send out a clarification or take some of these comments and give us some feedback? Or would you be interested in forming, we could form a council committee to meet with Keith? I mean, Keith is the manager and he's responsible for dealing with the employees in the contract, but we also technically approve the contract. So it's, what would, I understand your concern.
And we're approving the expenditures.
Yes, sir.
That's not a concern.
So are you asking for some more clarification from Keith on the contract and make it a little more explicit or?
Not cover certain things or cover perhaps, make it explicit of the things that are better in the contract.
I just want to make sure that when we vote to spend money, it's matching what we said we were going to do, that's all. However, he's the manager, however he wants to handle it.
Very good questions. So can we get some feedback from Keith and we could readdress it if you want the feedback? Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Can you get some clarification for us, some?
Right, well, I've got your feedback, I think that's more important, is you've given me the feedback as how you want it implemented, so between Tim and, and I'll incorporate Megan's comments in myself, so the three of us will communicate.
This is, we can alter it, so it's not that we have to redo it.
You mean, not just one or two, everybody's okay with that or most of us?
Eight, Tom.
Yes, please.
The clarification will be, there is a gray area to that, so, okay. Okay with that? Okay. Does anyone else, we have one eye, if anyone else has any new business? Oh, Tim, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say, part of the job is also working with the building owner. So even though somebody is interested in the downtown, sometimes it's not as easy as you think and not as quick as a half hour of talking to a building owner to allow that business to come in. In addition to negotiating the lease on both sides to make sure it's healthy for both ways, for people to make money. So it's not just one little aspect. And then also consider Saturdays and Sundays, and I know that's, it's part of the deal of recruiting, you do it whenever you have to. But there's a lot of nights, weekends and all that, and this particular one was a little easier, but I will tell you that we just had one that worked on a year and a month that a lot of work for nothing. So, but this does have a lot of work behind the scenes and if you talk to, you could talk to Jennifer Winder, would be a good person to talk to about how much work went in.
Thank you, Tim. It's another new business. We do have an item at your table, I think that was addressed earlier. This is the Corona Smoke Shop, and apparently with a investment of over two hundred thousand dollars, they are eligible for a liquor license. And we are being asked to approve Resolution twenty oh three, which would begin that process to have them secure a liquor license for the Wilbur's Building. Keith or Megan can probably be better than I can, but...
It's the process and it's the similar license to what the Tibbetts apply for and receive and what JT's applied for and received. And because, because of the value of investment that's occurred over time downtown, there is a significant number of liquor licenses that the city qualifies for that are specific to the downtown. This, this particular license can't be transported. And that gives the purchaser or the business the availability of licenses of what would be on what might be quarter, the quota license or, or, or might be otherwise available, if not available, within the market. So it's a twenty thousand dollars to them, it's a twenty thousand dollar flat fee to the Liquor Control Commission, but we need to provide them approval and we document them the level of investment through our city assessor that's occurred over a period of time to justify them getting a permit for downtown.
Question? Good news. Question? If not, we look for a motion to adopt, approve Resolution twenty oh three. We have a motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Any other new business? Seeing none? We're here.